Thank you all. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Patty, would you call the roll?
Yes ma'am. Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here ma'am.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Litt.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any public comments that are not on the agenda? Comment cards?
No, no ma'am. Comment cards would only be for these agenda items and you only have one.
Okay. So at this time, would you please read the title?
Ordinance 7, 2018, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Section 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on August 28, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at Section 4-1 to change existing city council term limits from two consecutive full terms to three consecutive full terms, and providing that such term limits shall be applied retroactively to sitting -- city council members, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, an authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Thank you. At this time, I will open the hearing and staff presentation.
And just so you understand, Madam Mayor, the clerk is going to go through the presentations. He's going to do a presentation on all three and then you'll vote on them individually and you'll have discussion individually.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Patricia Snyder, City Clerk. For the record, City Council directed the city attorney via Resolution 21, 2018, at the April 5 meeting, to draft charter ballot language to call for a special election and to enter into an agreement with the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections to conduct the special election in conjunction with the August 28, 2018, primary election. On Friday, April 13, 2018, the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections provided the city with the special election agreement for vote processing, equipment use, and election services for the August 28, 2018, primary election. The city clerk has prepared the agreement for the mayor's signature and has transmitted it to the SOE. This is the first ballot question, Ordinance 7, which has to do with the term limits. I'll leave this up here for just a moment to show the strike through and underlines. This is the ballot question for question number one. Shall the Palm Beach Gardens Charter be amended to change from the existing term limit which prohibits a council member from being elected to more than two consecutive full terms to a term limit that prohibits a council member from serving for more than three consecutive full terms and making the change apply to all sitting council members? The next ordinance is ordinance number eight. This is proposing that all portions of the charter be repealed except that part thereof describing the boundaries of the city and that a new city charter be adopted. The question for number two. Shall the city charter be amended to remove provisions that are outdated, unnecessary, or conflict with state law, including municipality, city clerk, and city treasurer's specific powers, duties, oath of office, merit system, procedure removing councilmen, qualification of electors, council meeting and procedure, and other provisions, revise council manager relationship, change filling of vacancies, limit initiative referendum, define full term, remove council confirmation of employees, and other changes as provided in Exhibit A, Ordinance 8. Next is Ordinance 9, which is the city manager residency. I'll leave that up there for a moment. And ballot question number three reads, shall the Palm Beach Gardens Charter be amended to remove the requirement that the city manager be a resident within one year of appointment and instead provide that any residency requirement for the city manager be determined by the city council in the city manager's employment contract? This next slide just reviews the required advertisement. In accordance with Section 1813 of the city charter, a proposed ordinance shall be published at least 14 days prior to adoption, be noticed once in a newspaper of general circulation in the municipality. The ordinance was published on both Monday, April 16, and Wednesday, April 18, under Section 100.342 Florida statutes and Section 2611 of the city's Code of Ordinances. The city clerk shall cause a notice of this election to be published in a newspaper of general circulation within the city at least once in the second, third, fourth, and fifth weeks, provided the first publication shall take place at least 30 days before the date fixed for the referendum. And then last, under Section 2614D of the city Code of Ordinances, the city clerk shall publish a sample ballot in a newspaper of general circulation prior to the day of the election, but no more than 10 days prior to the election. Within each ordinance, this language is contained. The revised language as set forth in the ordinances shall become effective as of 12:01 a.m. on August 29, 2018, if the questions to be voted upon, provided here and above, receive an affirmative vote of the majority of the valid votes cast and counted at the election held on August 28, 2018. Staff recommends approval of Ordinance 7, 2018, Ordinance 8, 2018, and Ordinance 9, 2018, as presented on first reading.
Thank you. Well done Patty.
I have no cards on Ordinance 7 and that is where we're going to start. We're going to take this by ordinance, correct Max?
Yes ma'am.
Okay. So I have no cards, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. We'll bring it back for discussion and I'm sure we have discussions, so. Rochelle, any questions or comments?
On the last part that Patty read, is there a difference when it comes to voting on ballot questions, majority, plurality? Is that an issue at all or is it always just the highest number of votes? We're using the term majority vote when it comes to ballot questions.
For the referendum, it's a majority, yes ma'am. It's not plurality because there's only, it's a binary. It's yes or no, so it is majority.
Any other questions Rochelle? Matthew?
I'm going to listen and then come back if it's okay.
Okay. Mark?
Well, as far as the wording on Ordinance 7, it seems that it should be pretty straightforward following the past failures of the language at the past ordinance that was challenged in court. So I don't see any specific questions with how it's worded or whether or not a member of our city would be able to understand the language clearly enough to make an educated vote. So I don't have any questions on this other than to say that I'm glad that we're able to revisit this and make sure that the voters of our city get to hear all of the recommendations of the charter review and apply their vote as such, so thank you.
Thank you. Carl?
My position's not going to change on this as it didn't the first time we voted on it. I do appreciate the language in this particular question. I do believe it's clearer for the voter and which is the way the judge wanted us to go, so I'm happy with the wording and I don't have a whole lot to say about it.
Thank you. Matthew? Are you going to be brief or long?
I'm trying to be brief.
Thank you.
I promise. I'm going to do quick. I'm going to try to do a quick pitch for what it's worth. And I'm going to do the quick pitch for the two four-year terms because I've talked to so many people on all sides of this issue and they all have said it made sense, so I'll see if it makes some sense here. If it does, fine. If it doesn't, that's fine too. I believe the sweet spot between the people who want term limits and the people who want greater stability and continuity and institutional memory is for us to serve two four-year terms and then our service would be complete. And here's the logic in the two four-year terms. It's consistent with how elections are held on a statewide basis and a national basis. If you look at the Florida, the National League of Cities, the most common term of office for council members is four years. And the Florida League of Cities will show you the most common term of office for council member is also four years. And when Dr. Lee conducted the Charter Review Committee, he said that four years was the optimal length of service by council members. Finally, the Charter Review Committee split 3-2. There were two members for two fours and two members for three threes. Now, there's an argument that a three-year term gives you another chance to throw someone out, but you know, if we went with that argument, why not two years? I mean, then we'd have electors having the opportunity to throw people out eight, four times in eight years. The other argument would be that it's already been voted on by the electors and that's subject to an appeal. If we handled this now, that appeal would go away too, so it'd be nice to get rid of that piece of litigation. Here's the quick, quickly, here's the benefits of two fours. First, it's a cost-saving measure for the city. You don't have to have as many elections. Second, you get stability and incertleness in governance. Third, you get consistency and continuity. Fourth, you have an opportunity to engage in long-term planning. Fifth, it preserves institutional memory. Sixth, it gives us time to focus on our work and less time to spend campaigning. And finally, all of us would only have to run one time and we would, one more time and we'd have eight years to serve. So it would save all of us a lot of money. I know it costs around $100,000 a throw for every one of these elections. So we would, we wouldn't have to run again. We would, Maria and Carl wouldn't have to run again for two more years. We wouldn't run for three more years. We would serve our term and those would be the benefits. So if it pleases anybody, that would be something that I would recommend and for those reasons.
Thank you. I am going to say that I am good with the three three-year terms. It's a mixed bag around the county, what the term limits are, what the terms are, I should say. Some are two-year terms, some are three-year terms, some are four-year terms. Some, you can run as many times as you want, some you're term limited out. So I think because our electorate is used to us serving three three-year, serving three year terms, I think it would behoove us to keep it consistent and just make it three three-year terms. They did want term limits and I think this is an accurate way to keep our electorate informed, give the council time to learn everything about the job. There is a lot to learn. I've been doing this for two years and I'm still learning the rest, Carl a year and a half, the rest of our council a year. And as evidenced by going to a luncheon today with Rochelle and Mark, there's so much out there that we don't know and we really do need the time to get it accomplished. So I am good with the three three-year terms and I have no more to say, so at this time, I will ask for a vote and...
If I may, just as a quick, Matthew, I don't disagree with anything that you said and I think it's six and one half dozen the other. I don't think there's a major issue with two fours or three threes. I think the fact that we have three-year terms and we've had three-year terms for so long, there's really not a huge need to do that. You know, you made the comment that maybe it'd be easier for us not to have to run another election and you know, you try to take the cost of democracy and elections out of the democratic process and whatever we have to deal with really shouldn't matter. Yes, it opens us up to another election, but in the grand scheme of things, that's probably not a bad thing. So, I mean, for us personally, perhaps it's not because we will have to run a third term if that's what we chose to do and if you get through the first round, but that's okay. I think that will allow for natural change. So to go through the debate of what's better, two fours or three threes, there's valid points on both sides of that, but really what we're doing here tonight is making sure that the voters understand a question and they can choose if this is good enough for them, which ultimately would be good enough for whomever is sitting up here. So you know, I thank you for making the comments, but I don't know if really that's something we should be trying to do at this point because there's really not a lot of argument between, oh, well, should we use three threes or two fours? I mean, really, people are kind of split and they're somewhat happy with either, so that's my comment. And I don't disagree with what you're saying, but I think it's at this stage that I'd rather just maintain what we have and allow the voters to decide if they want to go nine or six.
Thank you. All righty, so at this time, I'm going to take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries for one. All right. Ordinance 8.
Ordinance 8, 2018, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with Section 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on August 28, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that all portions of the charter be repealed except that part thereof describing the boundaries of the city and that a new city charter be adopted, providing for general and transitional provisions, providing for effect on existing laws, providing for officers and employees, providing for city boundaries, providing for continuation of form of government, providing for municipal authority, providing for the city council as a legislative and governing body, providing for a city manager, providing for a city attorney, providing for city elections, providing for charter review, providing for submission of the proposed ballot question to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I will open the hearing. I do not have any comment cards, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. So let's start on this end. Carl?
There is a ton of work that was put into this question being revised and I appreciate Max's effort in going over this again and again and again and I again don't have any problem with the way it's wording. It's very difficult. It again addresses the ambiguity in it and it simplifies it as much as possible for such a loaded question in 75 words, so I would prefer to put it to the voter and let them choose how they want their government to go forward.
Thank you. Mark?
Well, this is probably the most difficult one to have to try to make it clear to the voters about what they're voting for. And the hard part is, is when you look at this language, I fully believe that anybody can look at this and say, there's something wrong with it. If someone truly wants to challenge this question because of the complexity and the amount of information that's trying to come through in the 75 words, they can. But when you, when you really look at what has been done, if someone took the time to read the charter amendments, the strikeouts, the underlines, it did what it was supposed to do. So my questions to, to the city attorney and manager when I had my meeting earlier today was, number one, can someone challenge the question based on the verbiage? And number two, did we do a good enough job listening to our residents, going through the charter, discussing the concerns that people had about some information that may still be in the charter that maybe someone would consider as trying to slide something through and trying to make sure that whatever issues people had were either asked in a separate question or were not changed in a way that would create controversy? I fully believe and I hope, and I'm hoping that we'll have some meaningful discussion here in between now and second reading, that the second part of that concern is going to be, will be proper, that people will have thought that they read this, they saw it, they understood what we were trying to do. We're not trying to slip anything through or pass something that wasn't supposed to be and that we took out the questions that people would have had. We left in a requirement for a charter review every five years. We maintained certain things in there that people felt should have stayed and we did. And that makes me feel good. Will someone come and look at this question and say, the voters didn't know what they were voting for? I don't know. I mean, if someone wants to, as Max said the other time, that they want to make this sport, sure, you can ask this question and say, well, I don't understand what filling of vacancies means. If someone's going to stoop to that level, I don't know what we're going to do because then we'll never change this charter. I fully hope that the people in the room and the people that are listening and everyone in the city will know that the city attorney and manager and this council did what we thought was best to listen to everybody and make sure that the proper information was removed, that proper information was stayed, and that we're trying to do this for the best interest of the city. So with that, I will say I'm happy with it and I have no questions, but just that was my comment. Thank you.
Matthew?
Yes, in my charter review, we had this discussion and Ron and Patty helped with this. If you look at Section 9 of Ordinance 8, it was my understanding we were going to, Max, that we were going to change the language there instead of saying the revised language, we were going to change that to, shown to Ron's suggestion, we're going to change that to the additions and delete, the language as added and deleted, and that didn't make it into this version that's sitting here. Is this...
Tell us where it's at.
You're on page three of four.
We're talking about the charter itself.
No, I'm talking about the proposed ordinance 8. If you look on page three, it's Section 9 of the ordinance.
That's part of the, that's part of the staff presentation.
Well, it's, it's part of the ordinance, yeah. There's a couple where, there are a couple where as clauses and then it goes Section 1, Section 2, Section 3, Section 4, Section 5.
Which one do you have a question on?
9. And Max was going to change that, Ron and I, Ron...
It starts with this ordinance, Max?
Yes.
Okay.
Are you referring to the revised language?
Yeah, the revised. Instead of using the word revised, we were going to specify that it's, it's the language that we're adding and the, and the language that we're subtracting as contained in Exhibit A shall become effective. Are we going to change that or what? Because Ron, you know, Ron seemed to think that was a good idea and so do I.
Adding and subtracting, isn't that the same thing as revising?
No.
So you want revised, change the what?
Well, how do, what do we do, what did we come up with the, Max, what are your thoughts? Or what are you going to do?
He's catching up, hang on. Max or Matt, what did you want? Because this was, I wasn't privileged to your...
Can't you just say...
We're going to say the strike-throughs and the underlying portions contained in Exhibit A shall become effective. Yeah, as what Ron just said, I think that's the best way to do it.
Can you use updated? Updated language as contained in Exhibit A?
Well, yeah, but you want to say what you're actually doing. You want to say the up, something along the lines of, we're adding the parts that are underlined and we're striking the parts that are being deleted. What's your suggestion, Ron?
Leave it alone?
No, that wasn't a suggestion. Sorry, yeah, I know, it's further than it looks. So I think we had talked about, so I think we had talked about saying that the addition, the additional language contained in Exhibit A and the deletions contained in Exhibit A shall become effective.
So what you want this to read is, the additional language and deletions as contained in Exhibit A shall become effective?
Yes. And I was told that that was going to be changed in my...
I do recall us discussing that and I don't know that we reached the decision, but it's, I understand what you're trying to say, additions, deletions. And we also understand that the word revisions are the same thing as additions and deletions. I don't know which is more clear for the reader, but again, that's, it's not my determination.
Yeah, I walked out of the meeting thinking that that was what we had agreed on, that we were going to say the additional language and the deletions as contained in Exhibit A shall become effective on August 29.
When there are deletions and when you do additions, you're revising the document.
Correct, but this makes it clear what we're actually doing because...
That's, that seems clear to me.
Matt, do you think that...
Hold on, hold on. One at a time.
Matt, do you, do you think maybe the way that you're wanting the language to be changed simplifies it? Because that would be a goal, that would be a goal as well.
It makes it much clearer. That's exactly what I'm trying to do. I'm saying, this is what, what I'm trying to do, thanks for asking, what I'm, what I'm trying to do is make it very clear what we're doing tonight. What we're doing tonight is, we're adding certain language and we're striking certain language.
Correct.
And the rest is staying the same. So we're saying, this is, what I wanted to make it clear is that that's exactly what we're doing.
Would you write that down for me, the way that...
Right here. The additional language and deletion, what Max would like this to read is, the additional language and deletions as contained in Exhibit A shall become effective as of 12:01 a.m. on August 29.
You can tell that we're out there, he does that well, very good.
That's what we would like it to read.
Yes.
So I don't...
But Matt, and if we, if we agree on changing this, does this, does this, not that we're to the point that we're voting on this, but is this something that redirects your thought process as far as a nay or a yea on this particular issue or...
Yes, absolutely.
Well, I, for one, I don't, I don't think it, adding three words here doesn't make any difference. If it says this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon adoption, the additional language and deletion as contained in Exhibit A shall become effective as of 12:01 a.m. on August 29, 2018, is fine in my, Max is that...
Let's see if Max has a legal issue with changing those.
Max, is there any...
Let me see if I can figure out a way to write it. My thought process is...
What does it do to the ordinance?
Yeah, because we know, especially you, Matt, one word can change the definition of a whole paragraph.
It'll save, it'll save the ordinance.
What?
It'll save the ordinance.
How, I don't see how that happens.
I don't see how that saves or not saves an ordinance because addition and deletion is the same as revised, but...
I agree.
Whatever makes everyone up here comfortable, I think, is the key, so...
And our goal is always for all five of us to come together and, and vote collectively and if Matt feels that those two, three words will simplify it for the citizen and Max doesn't have a legal issue with it, because I have a problem if one word in any existing charter changes the definition of the whole thing. So if what you're proposing, I mean, I can go along with that as long as Max is, is fine with the verbiage and the rest of our council.
Max?
Waiting on you.
When they go into vote, they're going to read the referendum question. There.
Yep. Yeah, this is, this is part of the ordinance, it's not...
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't change the language that's going to be presented to the voter. The voter's going to see the same verbiage.
It changes what we're doing.
It doesn't change the language that the voter's going to see.
It doesn't change anything. I disagree with you, but if you want to change your language, I'm trying to figure out how to change it. We've had this and this is just Mr. Lane's legal opinion again.
Okay, why don't we do this? Why, Maria, do you think we should let Rochelle go while he's working on it so we can move it along?
Rochelle? I want to, I want to direct my remarks to Max, so I will...
Well, I think...
Why don't we pause while Max...
Just pause if he's...
No.
No, we're not moving on. We will wait.
Yeah.
We will get an answer.
No rush, take your time.
If anybody would like to comment on the actual body of the ordinance, I know...
Well, that's what I want to do, but I'll wait until we have Max's attention for that.
Okay. We could take a moment's, moment's break.
Is it appropriate to ask Matt why he thinks it will save the ordinance?
There's a multitude of reasons, but the gist of it is, is that it makes it much clearer what we're doing tonight, subject to any challenge. You know, it would help significantly if you want to pass this thing.
You can amend it to read like this, the language added and deleted via the strike-through and underlines as contained in Exhibit A shall become effective as of 12:01 a.m. on August 29, 2018, if the question to be voted upon, blah, 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 the less language stays the same.
Excellent. Very well done. I have nothing further.
Thank you. Rochelle?
I'd like to thank...
I'd like to thank Max for all the work he put in on this ordinance, especially after our long meeting this morning at my, at my review. It reads much clearer to me now, and I have no problem with it the way it is. I had some trouble understanding some of it and kept going back. And I think if there's anything going to what Mark said that somebody doesn't understand in here, they have exhibit A to go back. But otherwise, I think we've spelled out pretty much all of the big areas that, that we are removing because they're outdated, unnecessary, or conflict with law. And we're saying exactly what we're adding, what we're changing, and I think it's pretty clear, considering all that it has to say in 75 words. So, thank you, Max.
Thank you, Rochelle. I know it's been a long, a long process trying to clean up this charter, which hasn't been truly revised since before cell phones and computers. So, it has taken a little time and a lot of input, and the Charter Review Committee did a good job. I think each of us has, have asked pertinent questions about it. I mean, when you look through the old charter and you see, the municipality established shall have power to construct wharves, docks, and piers, regulate the speed of boats and water crafts, regulate wharfage, dockage, mooring, which is something that isn't even in our purview, and then you have the, to employ all personnel necessary for the successful operation, which goes against the council manager form of government. We're doing our job here by putting a document together that will take us into the future. So, I think the changes that have been made and the voices that we heard from the audiences, keeping, keeping the charter review every five years, we've done, we've done a very good job. And there will be plenty of time between now and August for people to see this exhibit with the strike-throughs, because I know that that was a question about having the exhibit with the strike-throughs. It's available. It will be available. I think that, what's the expression, and I probably will get myself in trouble here. You can lead a horse to water, but you can't make a drink. We can put all the information out there, and people will have to educate themselves. And that's what we hope you do when you vote, whether you're voting on a charter amendment or whether you're voting for a council member, or whether you're voting for a senator or a president or a governor. You have to do your homework to decide if what you're voting on is what you want to vote on. So, I think we've given the voters enough to do, to read, to make an educated decision. And I'm all in favor of it, and I would like to bring it back.
Can I ask one more, one more question?
Sure.
Just because it just hit me on here. On the language, on the referendum, it says revise council manager relationship. I'm looking at, on here, on the question, on the referendum question, other provisions, revise council manager relationship. In looking at exhibit A, there are really no strike-throughs. Well, we have more addition that clarifies that relationship as opposed to revising it. Is that a difference, Max, or not?
You mean the word clarify?
The word clarify versus revise.
The word clarify editorializes instead of the word revise, which is neutral.
Neutral, okay. Just-
And that's why we chose the word revise. And, and just so everyone knows, I think I explained this to all of you during your, your gender reviews, but I, I would be remiss if, if I sat here and accepted credit for the revised ballot language as if I just did it all completely on my own. We did reach out to a law firm in Tallahassee that, I can't say they specialize in it because it's not a recognized specialty, but they spend the bulk of their time either drafting language like this, challenging language like this, drafting legislation, challenging legislation. And so, we reached out to them, and I drafted up a bunch of different language. I made a lot of changes between, from the old language to this, sent it off to them. We've spent the bulk of the time that we've had since you directed me to do this, going back and forth and massaging the language and trying to make it as clear as possible and point out the, the significant changes and the principal changes in this, in the charter by, through the adoption of this ordinance and through exhibit A. That's why you'll notice the archaic language in here where it says council men instead of council members, as that is a direct lift right out of our charter, which is another indicia of the, kind of the age of our charter. And you'll see that where it seems like it's kind of clumsy language, that it says council meeting and procedure, because in that title in the charter, it says meeting and procedure. It doesn't say meetings and procedures. Things such as that. The power duties thing, again, it's the language out of the charter to try and be as specific as possible, to try and let people, inform them of what's being changed. And then those changes have been incorporated into exhibit A. You'll notice that in exhibit A, there was concern or voiced concern about whether or not the city manager's review, annual review was still in the charter, because it said may instead of shall, so we changed it back to shall. Because I didn't have a way to fit it in here with 75 words. And it was too cumbersome to try and make it part of number nine. While it's true that that was put in the charter in 1996 in one question, it's also true that as I read the ballot language from 1996, that it could have easily been challenged. The fact that somebody used ballot language and it worked and it passed doesn't mean that it was legal. It just means that it didn't get challenged. And that, that's one of the things that always raises an issue, and it makes it challenging when you're trying to draft this language, is because it's very difficult to prove your, you can't prove your case by pointing to somebody else's ballot language. You only can prove your case by trying to argue that it somehow doesn't comply or does, it either does comport or doesn't comport with a piece of case law, which is almost never completely on point to the issue that you're defending. That's one of the things, that combined with the relative rarity of election lawsuits, makes it difficult, because our judiciary, it's not their fault. They just don't deal with these that often. So, I worked with Ms. Bloom and people at her firm, and we spent a lot of time trying to go back and forth to present the public with a, while it seems like a lot of issues within the bounds of the limits of the 75 words, and keeping in mind that section 166.031 of the Florida statutes specifically empowers the municipality to amend their charter in whole or in part. They can do, you can do it by parts, or you can do it in its entirety. The courts recognize that we have a limitation in the 75 words, and the statute does allow, does afford us the opportunity to do it. So, you have to try and set forth as much of it as you can, and that's what we really tried to do here. And if you look at exhibit A, we did do it in strike through and underline. It's a little more cumbersome, but I think it better apprises people of what's changed. They can go and see what's being, what's being removed, and they can also see what's being added. And then they'll also be able to see things that, if they, if they actually look at it, they can see a lot of, some things that are just being moved. They're not, but I, because they're leaving a different section, they're going into the new section, they're underlined, but some of the language is identical. Some of it has little tweaks. Some of it has significant changes, and that's what we tried to call out here. But again, the city manager's review, that's, that's in there. As you said, the charter review remains in there. And obviously, the changes from 28 and 29 are in, but they're not in strike through and underline because they were passed, you know, while 28, the three-year sit out is being, is on appeal right now. It's still part of our charter at the moment. And so, that's what we, that's what we were trying to do, and that's what we tried to do in exhibit A. And I have to give credit to their, to their firm and their, and their efforts. They, they helped out quite a bit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Five zero. Yes. Okay. Ordinance nine.
Ordinance nine, 2018, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopted in accordance with section 101.161 and 166.031 Florida statutes, calling for a referendum to be held on August 28, 2018, proposing to the electorate of the city that the city charter be amended at section six dash one A to remove the residency requirement for the city manager, in order to empower the city council with the authority to determine any residency requirement as part of the city manager's employment contract, providing that the remainder of the charter, as may be amended by the electorate, shall remain in full force and effect as previously enacted, providing for submission of the proposed ballot language to the electors of the city, setting forth the form of the question to be voted upon at such election, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Patty, would you pull up question three on the screen? There you go. Thank you. All right. So, I will open the hearing. I have one comment card. Mr. David Parks, name and address for the record, please. You have three minutes.
David Parks, 11648 FICA Street. I know you're all wondering, what could he possibly have to say now? I just want to say thank you. I think you finally got it, guys. Ordinance eight appears to be the clean resolution that we were looking for to affect changes that complied our charter to the Florida state statutes. It was easy for me to make that determination, as Max exhibit A helps me see how it's going to be presented when it's all said and done. So, congratulations. I also want to give a special mention, mention to councilperson Litt. Thank you for your assist on the five charter, five-year charter review, staying in the charter, based on your comments at the last meeting. I want to say to manager Ferris, throughout this entire process, I've enjoyed you shepherding this new council. I hope your tenure is long here in the city. There are no complaints. The charter was important to me, but the day-to-day operations are as good as they could be. And finally, last to Clerk Snyder. Thank you and your team. You've been responsive to my information request in a very professional and courteous way. So, I'm behind letting the voters decide the other two questions, and I think your work has finally got us over the goal line. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I have no more comment cards, so I will close the hearing. And may I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. So, Matt, you go first. We'll go out of, out of order here. Anything, anything to offer?
I had a discussion with our city manager about this. Part of me thought that you should, should eat the food you cook. And the city manager would, by living in here, they would, living here, would eat the food that we cook. And Ron pointed out to me that that does make sense. However, you don't want to tie yourself that way. If it happens in an extraordinary circumstance, where the city manager that we want to hire can't, for some reason, live in the gardens, it's something we should think about. But at that point in time, when hopefully it'll be a long point in time away, we are tasked with that decision. We can decide whether or not it's important. I think it's very important. I think the city manager should live in the city and experience the services that all the residents experience. But once again, I wouldn't want to tie myself, and I think that that's why this makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. Rochelle?
No, I, I agree with Matt on that synopsis pretty much. We, we have a situation in the city where you could be on one side of the street and be in the gardens, and be across the street, and not be in the gardens. And we wouldn't want something like that to have to make us forsake the better person. And it's all about effective leadership, and we want the best leader possible. So, plus, we're, we're giving credit to the council for being able to make those decisions at the time and as part of the contract. And that's where it belongs.
Thank you. Mark?
Ditto.
[laughing]
Except, but obviously, if someone's coming from Tampa, we would, assumingly, the council that would be writing that contract would want that person to move into the city. But if they're coming from Jupiter, or North Palm, or Ibis, or somewhere around the borders, you know, those conversations would have to be made. So, I think it's perfectly reasonable. I'm glad that everybody is accepting of this type of language, and I'm glad that we pulled it out, and I hope that the voters would agree with us, but that'll be up to them.
Carl? All good?
Yeah, I've got nothing to say. No matter where they come from, we're going to annex it anyway. They're going to be in the city regardless.
[laughing]
So, who, so who cares? So, I'm with you. I don't need to say anything. You guys said it. I got you four where you need to be. Alls I need to do is vote.
Well, I will say, I agree with everyone, and I think what we are doing by putting this to the voters is we're showing that, hey, we're listening to what you're saying. If you think this is a good idea, then vote yes. If you don't think it's a good idea, vote no. From a business perspective, after spending an hour last Wednesday with 75 slides, giving the state of the city presentation, our city is in great shape. We have $150 million budget. We have 110 operating, and, 110 million, and we have a 94% approval rating. So, we must be doing something right. But in order to do something right, the person who is leading the charge, we set policy, we give it to the city manager to administer that policy. That's his job, or her job in the future. It might be a her, or a she. You want the best person for the job, and you don't want to tie their hands. So, if you want to increase your pool of people to choose from, you have to give them every opportunity. And say they live in Jupiter, and their kids are going to school in Jupiter. If you make the requirement that they have to come to the gardens, and they may be the best person for the job, but they don't want to take their kids out of a Jupiter school, they're not going to come to the garden. So, I think it's something that would be, hove us to put into their contract. Maybe it's two years before they get here, but it's in the contract. It's not something that's set in stone by the charter. So, I think we've done the right thing. Mr. Parks, thank you for your comments, and I think we have listened to the voters, and we've made these very specific and very clean. And I look forward to all of us voting on this one and moving this forward. So, I have no more to say, and I would hope that, since we have no more discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
I think we're done.
Motion to adjourn?
Let's go.
Yes, so moved.
Let's go.